Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Rosin City Council Meeting Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, 4:30 PM. Brett Hall's mayor is gone, so I am sitting in today for Brett Hall's. Let's start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Constitution of Republicans, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Can you do a roll call, please?
Uh, Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
Councilmember Shear.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Cook, here. Uh, Councilmember Rodine, present. Councilmember Yerin.
Here.
And Mayor Protam Adams.
Here.
And Mayor House.
I'll make a motion to excuse the mayor tonight. Do we have to do that?
Second. Okay, we good?
I have to say all in favor.
Okay, we're gonna do agenda updates.
Gotta vote on that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All in favor.
Uh, all in favor of excusing the absences?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, agenda updates. We are gonna remove the sewer hookups on item 10 tonight until we get some background information, so we go back public with the right, with the information we need. And we will add the property tax levy to number 10 on item 10 tonight. Okay, uh, checks. Let's go to consent agenda. Checks and electronic funds transferred EFTs. Accounts payable to the amount of $166,755.16. Payroll is $18,441.75. And have you reviewed the meeting minutes from March 22, 2022?
Make a motion to pass tonight's consent agenda?
Second. Everybody say nay or yea?
Yea.
Aye.
Yea.
Great, consent agenda passes. Let's go administrative up reports tonight. Um, is there anybody on for the police department?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. How about fire? Is the fire chief on tonight? Okay, let's go to commissions. Let's start with planning commission.
I know there's, I've, I've been remiss. I was up to date on meetings, but there's a meeting, a special meeting on the 20th, I know, to look at the recommendations by our OTEC firm. And Jeff, you know what meeting that I do?
Yep, and we just, we had a meeting last Wednesday, and it was really just an update with the commission members on where OTEC sits and what they need to sort, what their jobs will be as it comes through with the highlighted items on the OTEC report, okay?
And I attached to the agenda, just a little blurb about the dates for the planning commission. So the draft's supposed to be done, uh, OTEC's gonna use that gap analysis that's attached there. They'll create the draft, so we'll have that by the 14th. And then, um, that's what the special meeting is for on the 20th, so planning commission will review it on the 20th. I'm gonna send it to them as soon as we have it, but, and I'll send it to you guys as well, and then it'll be on your council agenda, um, the 26th, I guess.
So when we meet on the 20th, we'll have some, they'll have some looky-loo at that already by the time we meet on the 20th?
Yes, 'cause they have to have it to me by the 14th, 'cause it's gotta go to Commerce so we can meet our deadline to lift the mortar, so.
Okay, okay.
Everybody should have it 14th, 15th, right in there.
Right, right. Let's get an update from the public works department.
Um, well, starting out, I know we talked Jeff, but, uh, Boy Scouts were in town, by some drill holes in the sidewalk. So RDA, so in other towns, like they do it for Clay home, so the Boy Scout troop out of Elensberg, they did in Elensberg, usually the, the storefront owners can, um, basically you buy an American flag and they come out like from five to seven different holidays and they put them out. So RDA, um, paid for 60 of them to be put downtown. So we, they're from like South First, basically from Dakota to Washington, there's some, um, down Washington, down Penn, around the corner, on Second Dakota, but we stare at them so they look good, they're not all even or just random, so they'll kinda be offset going all the way down. So they still have a few to drill, so if you see somebody drilling sidewalk, that's what they're doing.
Okay.
Um, RDA's gonna give us $1,500 for sweeping this year again.
Yeah.
Oh, they sent it sweet. Uh, went up a little bit, but that'll at least give us, uh, eight hours of sweeping plus two hours mow charge each way, using the same company from last year. Uh, the crew fixed a six-inch clay tile storm drain line on Second Alaska that was damaged by the tree that fell, it was like the second day I started, like February 26th of 2021, but ended up a limb broke through, it was only like two feet deep, but it was in somebody's yard, so it was like kinda flooding their basement, so we ended up sandbagging until that was repaired. They got that fixed, then right at the property line going down to, uh, right on Second Street on the right of way, there's another, you guys found me the other day, but we'll get to it, it's not doing any damn property damage. Uh, we did some work in Renji Field, we got a community service kid for a couple days, so a lot of that gravel from the snow plowing, that you probably saw in the park, uh, he actually did a pretty good job cleaning that up, and then the guy straightened all the concrete ballards that were hit or bent, so they look more normal, I guess. Um, they worked on the dog park fence, 'cause there's quite a bit of damage, we almost wanted to say, get rid of it, but we don't have the money to make a new one, so we'll be repaired enough and we'll see what, how if it makes it through next winter. Um, I know we're tight in streets, but I had to order at least a pallet of cold mix, that gives us a pallet and a half, so we can, um, at least get those pallets patched. The coal car is in the shop, and Jim has it all taken apart, so we're working on rebuilding that, we're gonna put it out front of City Hall, that kinda where Brenda's Flower Garden is.
Cool.
Speaking of that, we also, if you saw, we poured some pads for the library benches, so we're gonna have one in the middle, one by the bus stop, we put the other one in the neutral chute of the library back there, and then we'll mount the other one that the grocery store owner bought. The bolt should be in tomorrow, the torrid lumber, so we can mount those. I ordered backup pumps for the water treatment plant because we didn't have any, so the chlorine pump or the filtered water pump goes out, we're not in a good spot for four to six weeks, but anyways, I ordered two new pumps and two rebuild kits, so, 'cause the filter water pump we're having problems with, and so I think it's ready to go, so as soon as we get that new one, we'll put it in, but we can rebuild the old one, so we have one set on the shelf, so we can switch it out within a matter of a couple hours. Um, TMG Services that updated the dosage box, I had it on my list last time in council, which went out, uh, they got me a quote for the chlorine analyzers, so we don't have to actually update the whole analyzer itself, we just update the wet side, so the brain box is in good shape, so basically be half price. So instead of spend five, six grand, it's gonna be like three, you know, three grand. And they also gave me a quote for the turbidometers, and like I was just talking to Nolan, the guy that came up to work on it, it's kinda cool, he, he's worked on the plant ever since it's been new. He actually worked on the chlorinator at the reservoir back when, so he had a lot of knowledge, which was really nice to know, and he gave me his card, he said I could call him Saturdays, Sundays, you know, he'd get back to me if I had some emergency. Um, also, I talked with Howard from Correct Equipment today about the emergency gas shut-offs, they are ordered, so as soon as they get delivered here, he'll send one of his guys over and they'll put those on, the ones you guys voted on.
Mm-hmm.
So, just been waiting, I just, stuff's been kinda hard to get, I guess. Um, we, Theo and I met with a couple engineers from Gray and Osborne discussing the transmission main replacement on the west side of the bridge, and the actual president of the, um, company came over unexpectedly. Well, come to find out, he's the one that designed the water treatment plant, so that's pretty cool, so we went up there. Any questions I had, he had the answers for, he actually sent me some information he had from, um, back in 98 about like scraping the filter bays. So what we're gonna do, he told, there's a test we could run, 'cause those, each filter bay can do 350 gallons a minute, and right now we're, you know, not in high demand, but after you scrape them, the ripening process can take two weeks, but it can go longer if you take too much, that's why we gotta be real careful about taking, you know, just like a half inch. So if we run this flow test and it, and the wears read that it's not up, and, I mean, I, it'd be better if it was there, I could explain it easier, but basically if we're not above like the three foot mark on the, um, weir level, then he's like, you're probably all right, and he goes, it is probably better to do them in the fall, 'cause when the man starts dropping down, like say we didn't end of September, we'll say it did take a month to ripen, um, then we have that time, 'cause the band's going down, so if we did it like first of May and it starts ramping up, then we could kinda get in a bad situation. So we're gonna run that, basically probably start tomorrow, just, we'll try to run like 300 gallons a minute out of one, um, filter bay, and then drop the other one to like 50 gallons a minute, and then just kinda, after a few days, we can read the weir and see if we, see if it needs to be done, 'cause like he said, there's, when they originally built it, 'cause I asked how much, or when do we have to put filter media back in, and they put 40 inches in when they built it. And, so yeah, and the, the DOH minimum's like 19 inches, so he goes, if it's been scraped five times, it took two and a half inches off, you know, in 25 years, so he goes, in your career, you're never gonna have to add, which was kinda cool to know. But he gave me his number too, so I could call him, which was kinda, I mean, 'cause that was my whole thing when after Theo, like when he showed up, Theo was getting excited, and I was like, I'm like, okay, and he's like, that's the guy, the president, I'm like, oh, that's cool, you know? Which, I was, I didn't know if the guy was still even, you know, if he was retired, that, you know, designed it, so. Which, other than that, that's kinda, um, it with the filter base stuff, I mean, he had a couple other, uh, things, he explained to me that there's also like roughing filters before it goes into the slow sand filter, and those are supposed to be flushed like every two months, but he said, as clean as our water is, you can probably get away with it twice a year. There's actually one valve that is broke that has to get fixed, so probably like a contractor's gonna have to do this pretty big job. But, um, so we're gonna start doing that, or we'll probably flush it come May. Uh, other than that, I passed my distribution manager two test on the 29th of March.
Correct.
I got Jim signed up for his cross connection control specialist class in July, so that'll be the last thing that we have to have for us three. I also have Kyle signed up for his water treatment plant operator one training class in May, and then he'll test, he'll probably even test that week or the next week like I did, so. Any questions?
Nice job.
Great. Good job. Congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
Good job.
When was the last time that a filter bed was scraped? I think 15 or 16. Yeah, I was like, yeah.
You made that emergency.
Yeah. Been an emergency or before that? 'Cause I scraped it myself once before that.
I volunteered with the crew for two days and helped them.
When it got really, really low.
Corey and Jim.
Yeah.
And we had that summer shut off, and I wanna say that was summer of 16. I could be wrong, but it was summer of 16.
Yeah, he, the engineer was like, it's really, 'cause they have like one in PL he told me about, and their, their water comes from Lester Creek, which is like two miles up in the woods, but their water's more turbid, so they gotta scrape there, it's like every two months. But he's like, your water's so clean, and he goes, yeah, I can't tell you like four years or eight years, but he goes, he said roughly six to eight, but, he goes, like I said, that flow test is the best way to tell.
Yeah, so you measure the head.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, I mean, that's just what we're gonna do, if we gotta be able to do it.
So this is about the right time to check it then, 'cause we're, we're five to six years into it, so we're right there to prevent.
Yeah, and Jim's been marking since he started, he marks like the monthly, like where the weir stays, so like right now the level's exact same as it was last year.
Okay.
And, um, it just jumped up in July, but demand was high.
Yep.
You know, and so that's why he's like, we kinda make that false demand, we can see what it's gonna do, and he goes, but it was still only like two and a half on the weir, he goes, if it jumps to like above three or three and a half, then you definitely wanna do it now.
Okay.
But he goes, if it doesn't, he goes, it'd probably be the best bet, just, you know, we got more time in the fall. And he did offer to come help if we needed it, or if we have anything else, you know, but, and then he did email me like an older document that, it's probably around here somewhere, so if I find it, but basically the step-by-step process on what valve you shut, filter aways, all that stuff.
Perfect. It sounds like it was a good meet and greet, and you might have a contact now that we could go to a direct source, which is something that we need to have a relationship.
Yeah, yep.
Moving forward with that.
For inside and outside.
Absolutely.
Yeah, oh, and he, well, since we're here, we did, we showed him the Clearwell too.
Okay.
And he said Mount Baker Silo is, uh, how do you put it, like, cost effective, I guess, you know, they, so he goes, he goes, he seen some that look that bad, look almost that bad, maybe after, and they're like five years old. But his best bet, and we told him like, we're working this fall for it, but it's like putting a liner in it, he goes, that's gonna be your best bet, don't, don't waste your time on the epoxies or, uh.
Or you have.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so he, yeah, 'cause he said they, where, where was it at? They did a liner on the Mount Baker Silo, 'cause it was leaking pretty, pretty good, so.
Okay.
Which was kinda nice, I mean, to have him there, so we just showed him everything, I mean, we tried to get down to the waterline bridge, but there's too much snow, so.
Yeah, well, that's good, that's good information.
That valve that you need to replace, that's a contractor's job, you think, is that the one on that catwalk that's been frozen forever?
Uh, well, I talked to the Titan Earthworks guy when we were down at a class in Elensberg, like last month, and he's, he just told me about it, but I know there's also like those four valves for the roughing filter that look like a, like steering wheel.
Yeah.
That, I think that first one's the one that seized up, it's like the cap's missing, that's the one you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what he's talking about.
So yeah, that's gonna have to get removed, the concrete pole, they're gonna have to get down, you know, either with a back truck or, I mean, it's gonna be a little bit of a process.
I remember looking at that with Jeff and Mike, and I, they even.
Those are show and tell when you first start walking through the whole plant.
Yeah.
And there is also, so, there's two per roughing filter, so he goes, you can still flush out that other one, which is fine, that's why they did, I guess, they, you know, put it for a backup, but it's one of those things, so.
There's a reason there's two.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, which is, yeah, it's good there.
Great.
Sweet, yeah.
Great, great report. Thank you. Let's get a little quick library update.
Okay, well, any of you guys, if you ever want a tour, it's looking amazing up there. Uh, we got to pick out paint last week and carpet.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know if they, I haven't been up there since last week, so I don't know if they've actually done the paint yet or anything, but they've taken some of the old wood and they've done wainscoting, um, along the, the base of the library, it's gorgeous, it's beautiful.
Cool.
Um, and they've been so wonderful to work with. Um, the other thing is, like Bubba was talking about, those benches that we got donated by, um, Senkadia, those, they're beautiful. Kyle and, uh, Bubba put them together last week and they are beautiful. And then the other thing, before I forget, Susapalooza is going to happen this year, and it's gonna happen differently than it has been before, so it's gonna be the 4th of July weekend, and it'll be on that Saturday, and that's July 2nd, and it's gonna be at the Renji Park. So, yeah, I'm so excited, I'm so excited that it'll be outside too, and then it's in the summer, and there's not horizontal snow, it'll be so nice. We'll be out of the snow by then, hopefully, so that, and I don't have like all the details yet, but, um, the friends are working really hard brainstorming and as I, as I learn more. Uh, she's reminding me that I also got a grant from the state, thank you. Uh, so, all of our steam programming stuff is now legitimately fully funded.
Oh, fantastic.
Awesome.
Good.
I knew it was coming, but now we can formally say that we got it, so.
Great.
And that's all I have.
Good, good.
Good job.
I have an additional, for the additional friends meeting, just 'cause I talked to Ellen today, so to add on what Brenda said, is, um, the friends have been meeting, um, they, the friends, quite a while ago pledged $30,000 toward this library renovation, it's kinda been on hold, and they voted last week to move that forward, and we'll bring a check next week for $30,000.
Awesome.
For, towards finishing this project. That's one part, and the other part is the friends are applying for a grant to finish the PD Center and, and members have had casual conversations about it, um, and so I'm, I'm kinda writing it, and we're asking for 1.8 million dollars to complete the upstairs, to finish down here, to, to basically finish everything, we didn't include landscaping, and I think we just have to wait on that one, so. It's, uh, it's Senator Murray's, excuse me, clear glasses, it's from Senator Murray's office, it's a F fiscal year 23 congressional directive spending request form, it's not a grant, I've been told four times, it's not a grant, it's a request for money, so.
It's appropriate, yeah.
It's appropriate, so, um, we'll keep everybody posted, so cross your fingers, and thanks to Jeff and, and.
We have a good little team getting it together, so it works.
Yeah, yeah. Then, then it will come tonight, but she asked me to let you guys know. So, we'll see what happens.
Fingers crossed.
Awesome, yeah.
Yep, they'd complete the building, so I think it was a good opportunity, they reached out to us also, so it was a, the engineer's done a good job with the grant, and we got a couple of things, I think, to get for the office, but we're really close.
We're really close.
Yep. Just anything else on the library then right now, anything? Just a quick cemetery update, um, they removed the trees in the new Croatian about two weeks ago, um, cleanup's already been done, basically until, uh, we do our cemetery cleanup, um, they're starting Croatian three, or the, um, I guess you call it Croatian three, future development this week, they're supposed to start cutting trees, but I haven't gone since yesterday, so I'm not sure, maybe Bubba can tell me if they started up there with logging layering last week, or this week?
I haven't seen anybody up there.
Okay, okay, so that's probably off this week, um, with the weather. Um, May 14th will be the cemetery cleanup day for the year, and, uh, last year we pushed probably 150 to 200 people, so we're hoping to get another great turnout, and, um, the Ros and Eagles will provide free lunch to anybody that volunteers for the day, that was something they had let me know, um, so anyone who would like to come up and do some, some cleanup for a day, you can get a free lunch out of it.
Awesome.
And that's it for the cemetery commission, and then I think we're gonna lead right into, um, admin committee right now?
Jeff, do you wanna, before we go, that, um, the retrofits amendment is on there under boards and staff, it's not an agenda item?
Yeah, we can discuss that, okay, I was just putting them up with the commissions and commissions.
Well, however you wanna do it, just don't forget.
No, let's get that done, because I think this is gonna lead into a, a few different items and conversations with them, so let's.
So that, that amendment that's attached there that I emailed to you guys too, is the cost, um, the additional cost that it would, that would be incurred by the city to explore other options beside the swales. So that would produce us a report that basically assigns, hopefully, costs to what the other options would be, so that would basically just get us a memo report for that amount of money in there, so.
That's just a look at for $19,000, basically, to provide us information with different options.
And that's not money that's in the grant, that doesn't mean we couldn't get it added on by Department of Ecology, but we, that would be an ask, we'd have to ask to do that, so, um, I, I don't know that you necessarily wanna do anything with it, I just wanted to make sure, what do you?
Okay, I think, that, yeah, I assume you don't wanna do anything forward like that tonight at this point, I think you wanna get it.
Well, how far behind are we?
Well, we're not really behind, we're at the 30% design, so if we're gonna do it now would be the time.
Very conceptual right now.
Before we go any further with the design.
But I thought Theo kinda urged that we had to have something by, I thought, soon, probably wrong May.
Yeah, so we either need to decide if we want to explore those other options and see what the costs would be, which would be now, or we do nothing, I guess, and give the grant back for that, this is just for the CIP treatment, so the CIP would continue, it's just the CIP treatment component that Ecology wanted in there. Um, so if we definitely don't want the swales, um, and we don't wanna pursue this, then I, I guess we'd be looking at returning the grant money, which I guess is an option as well, I don't, I don't think.
Can we tell you what that is?
What's that?
How much that grant is?
Um, can, well, the design and the, so we have the construction right now and the design, both, so you would be returning both of those, and I think the total was, oh, we're in the neighborhood of about, I, I, don't quote me, I, I think we're close to a million, both combined.
It's hard to give back and just owe it.
That's just for the swales? We wouldn't, wouldn't affect the Penn Place bottleneck replacement?
No, no, that's just for, so when we brought the Penn Place bottleneck, Ecology wanted us to, um, to implement a treatment component for that stormwater, and the treatment component is actually citywide, not just for CIP1, so it doesn't affect, CIP1 is a totally separate deal, we're at the design phase of CIP1's storm treatment component, I guess is what we're calling it, um, so we haven't even, I mean, we're just using that first grant that we got, and then Ecology actually gave us the construction grant as well. So this is, next year would, this would go out to bid, I believe, 2023, and then construction would be in end of 2023, 2024.
But two separate projects?
Two, two separate projects, but that are tied together only because Ecology wanted that treatment component attached to it.
So we didn't do the Ecology's recommendation, does that affect our CIP1 funding at all?
Um, the CIP1 funding is through the county, so probably not, but it would affect, I mean, Ecology is the one that reviews that, so yes, it does have an impact on it.
Yeah, they might say this isn't what we.
They might want us to change something in CIP1 if we're definitely not gonna do this, and I don't know the answer, if that would be a bigger discussion.
And spending this extra $20,000, we're not 100% sure if we can add it to the Department of Ecology's grant or not?
No, we're not 100% sure, it's not in there right now, it wouldn't, there wouldn't be enough to cover it, and that would give us basically a cost analysis of all the different options, and then from there, it would depend on if our construction grant was enough to construct those, or if we'd need more money on those as well.
And we've had options from Meaden Hunt and Theo, two different engineers on what we can do.
Well, Meaden Hunt designed the bio swales.
Yeah. And then Theo gave us his kind of recommendations and lowdown.
Yeah, he had that, yes. Then basically what his, he was saying is that that fits our street detail according to what they designed, which is just giving you history on how they came to the bio swales, really.
I guess going back, I just wanna make sure, by building the bottleneck, even though it's a different funding source, we have to do some treatment.
Yes.
Right?
That's what Ecology told us when we started the CIP1.
So if it's not the swales, it'll be something else, it could be something else associated, but we would end up having to pay for it if we dropped the swale?
Theoretically, yes, I mean, I, I don't know, I know what, yeah, I know what we have funding for based on what we presented, which included the, you know, the design that we've got going now.
But we have to do some form of.
We have to do something, so yeah, I don't know, yeah, we would, we would be looking at giving that funding back, does that mean we couldn't get more funding? No, I, that's not what that means, but I don't know the answers to those questions.
Okay, okay. Well, for, I mean, for me personally, just because of my background, uh, I know the open swales are gonna be way less expensive, and they're gonna be way less expensive to maintain. Uh, the, uh, the underground stuff, you know, those filter cartridges, you know, especially with our sand, they're gonna plug up all the time, we're gonna be constantly be replacing them, it's gonna be a major pain, but now if they're underground, they're hidden, that's awesome, uh, but, you know, that's, that's what it's gonna be, is there's gonna be a huge cost associated with it. Plus it's gonna create like, um, there'll be these big vaults underground, right? So there'll be utilities in the way, and things that are gonna have to be moved, I mean, it's just the way things go, it's not as easy as it sounds. So anyway, that's my, my personal opinion.
Yeah, I, I just say that, um, well, Janine and I actually walked around town, uh, on Sunday to where each of the sites of each of those bio swales would be situated, and it seems to me like they really will not have that much impact on, on, you know, our town. And, and the places where they are in front of people's driveways, most of those places are where people actually park in the alleys anyhow, so it really, it didn't look to me like it would have a whole lot of impact on, on residents.
The point of concern I think both Kathy and I had is, is it looks like the swale would go all the way down Washington Street from B Street to the bottom, which would go in front of two houses and the Cometto Inn, and that, that one, if that could be moved, that would make a big difference, I think, and, uh, because that would impact decisions just recently made to support the parking there, and it would, it would be the entire block, so if, I don't know how, how we would suggest moving those, or if that's a, where that would be in this discussion, I'm kinda new to this.
So, um, that, that they put on that, that plan that you guys saw is just the conceptual. So they still have to go out and actually do the survey work that was scheduled previously. So maybe after, after they do that would probably be the time. And I, I think Meaden Hunt, Kerry's pretty clear that that one was an area of concern. So I think if we can move it, that they would definitely.
Just what we've noticed is, I mean, Tom, myself, Janine and Kathy, if you look up Washington, it's the street above B Street that you'd think you want the swales where we have the water that really continues down. So that would probably be the key is if there's some, some movement allowed in design of where they go and, and size. And if we had to break up one because it was so large, could we take that percentage and put it somewhere else? So maybe not, it's effective, but maybe not as impacting. And cost wise, it obviously fits within the budget that our city can, that we can actually have.
It'd be interesting for people to walk around after a rainstorm and see where the water's going. Because like water, you know, because we live, I live near there, water goes down from, down B Street from Washington, like got a continual flow there. I mean, if, if, that would be kind of a logical place. I don't quite understand swales, but if you're going to put water underground, that would be a great place to move it around the corner.
For B to C, it's, yeah, it will, it will be wet until July.
Yeah.
And they even tested water because they thought it was, uh, city water at one time because it was running so good.
It's a good creek, isn't it?
It is a great creek right on the hillside. And so, yeah, that would be ideally because from B down, it doesn't get as much water. But B to C, it's horrible right there. I drive to make a trend, to make a ditch so it doesn't go into the street. I make my own ditch every year.
At some point, we want to probably cut that road and control that water flow so it's not sheen across. Because it's a hazard all winter. So we'd like to make a motion today to set the path forward with the swales. Yeah, go ahead, go right in.
Because I, I am a little bit, I feel like I'm a little bit behind the game here. I'm just, I kind of, I, I feel like I got a little poached. I kind of got stuck on this two thousand and five design for where the whole swales with curbs and here in the streets. And I just, I, I know this is in the code and I know we're revising the code, but this, this having, you know, putting a swell and then putting a curb up and it would just really change the neighborhood. So I just wonder if we, can we change this or where, where would that?
We can, and that's in that discussion. So with the OTAC stuff, we're updating that stuff as well. So that's where that discussion will happen. So we're just, on all of this, we're probably just one step prior to where you guys want it. Even the swales, where they're located, we're just one step prior to where we're going to be talking about. Same with that.
We're not, we're not tied to this. If this, if we decide.
Well, it's in the code right now, so that's what we have to enforce. But yes, we can change that. Those are actually complimentary to the municipal code. So if we can't bring that together at the same time as the municipal code, it doesn't affect anything. It's, it's a different, it's, it's just referenced in there. So we don't have to go through the same process necessarily, if that makes sense.
Because I know I spoke out pretty strongly against swales and I kind of, that's why I think, oh, I think I spoke too soon. I'm, I'm more concerned about like flat sidewalks. So especially after walking around and just actually looking at the places, it makes a lot of sense. So if we, if that makes a difference in this discussion, I just want people to know.
So I just, maybe this, I'm sure this has already been thought of, but I just want to just add that the challenge in any design where you're retrofitting something into an existing system is that the folks doing the work are remote and they don't necessarily have all the information. Uh, and so what happens is you set up this process where it ends up costing you money because work gets done, it's shown, it's got to walk back. And so if, if it's not already on the table, I think it'd be good if, if we put together a team, you know, whether it be Bubba, Theo, Michelle, Jeff, to go with somebody from them, walk all those locations?
That's already on the, yeah. So Bubba and Theo will, will actually go when they do that.
Yeah, we, we walk.
To give them feedback and to start so that they don't start walking down a path that we'll end up paying for, right?
Yeah, we walked it once, like on North A Street and a couple of the other ones, well, then on North First Street. And then also like that, we're on Washington where the water comes out. I was told by a couple of guys that that's just a broken clay tile line.
See, they, yeah, they tested.
It's never been fixed. I mean, so it's a.
They tested the water and they noticed that it was just coming off the hill because that was a concern.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. It's just, it's storm water, but it's just, it's a broken clay tile line that no one ever fixed. So that, that was one of my things is like, you know, when you get a chance, but that one's going to be more of like back truck or backhoe. The other one we hand does because it was in a yard and it was only two feet deep, but, and wherever it goes.
We're supposed to.
It goes somewheres, but it does go right down the bottom towards like the coal mine trail where the, um, that storm line is.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, that'd be cool. That'd be cool if it was just a broke, um.
Yeah, because it's really easy fix.
You can repair that.
Yeah, at least fix that. And then, I mean, as far as those bio swales, because I did, before, the first time we planned, we were going to do the test pits for all those. So I rescheduled it today, actually, with the Geotech guy for May ten. Because then, I mean, and even like on Washington where it's like a, like a big area, they only have like one or two spots they're going to dig to check, kind of see where exactly.
The other thing is I would, uh, I would just agree with Janine is that we should view that cross section, the road cross section. And I would bet you that Theo would agree as concept and not necessarily all the exact dimensions because we have grade issues, we have all sorts of things.
Yeah.
And just use it as a template.
Yeah, I want to speak to that real quick. I was trying to sort of get this earlier on, but I wanted to let everybody speak. So I, I was, I got a call from Theo today when I was boarding and it left me a message. I didn't get to talk to him, but his message was exactly pertaining to that, that cut section, okay? Look at the bio swales completely separate of the sidewalk. And that was the one thing he wanted to make sure is that you looked at it, it's just its own component. This is something that we'll be working on through code and what we want to develop down the road. And he said, just make sure that we're separating the two items. It doesn't necessarily have to work with that detail because that is, it is in our book. But we, I think we all know there's going to be some adjustments to that code or that policy. So just make sure you separate the two and don't get too fixed on sidewalk to how the swales. And that was something he was really concerned. So we, we look at sort of really what we're looking at. So, um, I mean, it sounds like we possibly, someone maybe want to make a motion and move the swales forward at this point. Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I don't actually need a motion. The motion would only be if you guys want to halt everything and examine the other options. If we want to continue as we are, then I don't think we need anything.
Yeah, we don't need anything. We just don't, don't ask.
So no more slowing down.
So that would mean that this nineteen thousand dollar contract, we would just refuse that.
Well, yeah, we're just not going to.
You see, we're.
That's a great idea.
Okay, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Great. Great, okay, let's move on. That's, that takes care of board and staff with Meaden Hunt. Uh, before we go, goes and go into announcements, presentations and so forth, I want to get into the admin update now. And we could talk about that, the sidewalk project with admin budget. So Jeff would like to start.
Well, first thing on, uh, admin, we put a property tax levy for discussion.
Okay, okay.
As item ten, then overviewing sort of expenditures to date finance is at ninety percent, right?
Eighty.
Eighty percent.
Eighty.
So we've spent, in the first quarter, we spent eighty percent of our budgeted finance.
For the general fund?
Um, just for the finance department. So we're talking, we're talking the treasurer. Okay, we've already, we've got another month of treasure and we don't have treasure. Loaned that budget, we cannot, I don't know how we're going to fix that.
So you mean for to pay the treasurer's salary?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, the, yeah, the treasurer's salary is actually divided through several, but one of those components is finance.
Is finance. And everybody puts a little bit of time in finance. So I guess what I'm saying is this, it's completely budgeted wrong. Or, or we're not following it.
It's budgeted.
And it needs to be fixed. So what we budgeted for staff was two full-time staff people in the office and a part-time staff person in the office. Currently, we have three full-time staff people plus the occasional help that's been going on since January.
And wasn't the treasury, was that a, that was a part-time job with Sarah? A thirty-two hour a week job with Sarah?
Sarah was budgeted full-time. I mean, Sarah typically didn't work forty hours, but yeah, it was budgeted for full-time.
But not this, not this year?
This year.
No, when Sarah, when it was Sarah and I.
Yeah, but that was only two employees for two years, right?
Correct, yes, 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 yes.
But this year, we only did a part-time treasurer, if I'm correct.
No, we do full-time with a part-time.
With a part-time.
But we had three full-times with a part-time.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so I guess my recommendation is that we need to reel this back and follow what we budgeted for.
Why did we deviate?
I don't know.
We pushed the mayor's. And of course, we went through transition and change, with change of staffing, but we are definitely not overspending.
Yeah, it's, or we've overspent.
Right.
And, and we're not going to, there's no revenue.
Right.
Yeah, so it's just that it's.
And now we're, now we're consulting, Sarah is now working remotely with the city again to some degree. And we have not gotten her, her invoices yet. So that will be another layer of.
Another layer of that. Yeah, so I guess I'm concerned with the oversight of, of where that sort of admin budget is going. And I'd like to hear some answers and how we're going to pay for it.
So Jeff, what's your big question? What's your, how are we going to pay, I mean, where are we?
Cuts?
I want to know why we deviated from the budget.
Okay, okay. And how are we going to pay for it?
And then how are we going to pay for it? Is that fairly fair assumption of what our discussion was? Okay. Um, next is in admin, also I've noted that Public Works, we budgeted for a Public Works director and two crew staff. Currently, we have three crew staff. We've had Public Works people that have, we've asked them to take classes and become qualified and they need to be compensated for such. And that's in the budget also. And so I'd like to make sure that that gets passed on, that we follow that also, follow that budget process.
Is that over budgeted to the same degree?
It's not over budgeted.
Okay, so it's on track.
It's on track. And, 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 and having people qualified for those positions, because we're still on track. We're not overspending.
Okay.
So recommendation would be to move?
Move whatever. Whatever, indeed, there, there needs to be, the mayor needs to go through and do a review of staff and decide where we're, where we're placing.
So this is a request to the mayor?
Yes.
To answer those questions?
That's, that's his, we're, we're not.
Nope, all we can do is make a request.
Yeah, we're not doing that. That's, we're not, we don't take care of personnel. But we do.
Make recommendations.
Second December, um, when we went through the, the number of special meetings, right, to pass the budget, uh, there was talk and I just felt that we agreed, but maybe we didn't formally, that we would have our first quarter update.
Yeah.
After the audit was completed. And, you know, obviously, we can't wait too long because we got these revenue issues. So we got to get revenue somehow and start that. But is that still on track to have a more holistic view of all this?
I'm giving you a thirty thousand foot view right now. Yeah, this is our sort of, this is where we are at the code. And, um, I had, what was the, I'm not sure exactly, I'm just pointing out the highlights, the big highlights.
Okay, so that's what you were doing is the first quarter update?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so we're running through that. There's other issues, there's attorney, um, attorney costs are about seven, I think, or seven percent. I think they're a hundred and twelve percent.
Two hundred and twelve percent.
Two hundred and twelve percent.
So budgeting seven thousand and?
We budgeted, yeah, we budgeted seven thousand and we've spent fifteen thousand.
Okay, is that related to the, uh, the variances in the hearings?
Yeah, some of those, that's what I told them to add in. So some of those are pass-through fees that, definitely not all of them, but I would say close to half is probably pass-through fees that we, um, either haven't collected from the applicant yet or they haven't been billed for yet. So some of that will be compensated, but that doesn't, that definitely doesn't make up the whole thing, I'm sure.
Yeah. And so that needs to be watched, I guess, to make sure, to make sure we do some follow-up on that. Um, was there anything else to highlight?
Could you?
Uh, well, the side, the sidewalk, um, on track. Or is that, is that, were we talking about that someplace else?
Give us an update just where reserves sit in the sense of how that looks in the city at this point so that we understand that we really have no reserves at this point, no more reserve base sense.
Oh, we're on, for general fund reserves, we have no general fund reserves after we paid the snowplow, I believe.
And then, well, yeah, because we'll have to, the, the, the streets, the streets is showing, I don't know if you guys have that report, but the streets is showing negative right now. Because that transfer comes from the current expense fund.
Yeah.
So, um, so, yeah, there's no, there's no reserve.
There's no general fund reserves whatsoever.
So from my understanding from Sarah, when I had the conversation was that, well, if we continue down the path that we're at right now, from my understanding, that we'll be lucky to break even this year. And if we were to end up with ten thousand to fifteen thousand in the reserve, we'd be lucky. I think that should be a big flag for everybody.
Well, we're supposed to have three months operating.
And, and I don't, and, and, you know, I think transferring funds, I mean, I, just my opinion, transferring funds to put your reserve doesn't put us ahead, right? It puts us behind.
Yeah.
And inter-fund loans, um, so just sort of think about all that.
Well, keep in mind too that, you know, the, the two streams of revenue for the general fund are your property taxes and your ex, or your, you know, your taxes.
Yep.
Your pro, or your, gosh, I can't even think my brain.
Like the B and O tax and utility taxes. Operating taxes.
So the property tax is only going to start trickling in in May. So, you know, we haven't really received any revenue in there, but yeah, that, Sarah's, Sarah's relay was that basically we, we could still break even and, and end up in the positive, hopefully, to the tune of ten or fifteen. But our, we typically carry over between three hundred and eighty, she said, and four hundred thousand. And, and that's basically what we spent on the, the snowplow. Or the snowmelt.
Yeah.
And then you would step into the sidewalk type project.
Oh, then the sidewalk, yeah.
Here, I'm going to hand you this.
That project has gone up.
It has gone up and we lost one of the grants, just those cog money.
We were talking about that, we're not sure that is actually true.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have to research that a little bit.
So that, the, the history of that chunk of money, is that correct?
That's, I believe, that, there was twenty thousand dollars that we, that we decided to give back into cog essentially. Cog took it back because we didn't act on it. We, we now have a timeframe, we can't just sit on this cog money forever, which makes sense. But I believe that was for the emergency repair out by the brick.
When Tom received the twenty thousand, last summer, I believe.
Or something like that, yeah. And then there's another, another amount of cog money that for this emergency sidewalk that I think we still have.
So we need to do some homework on if, if they're separate of the nineteen or twenty thousand dollars to, and if it's actually still sitting for this project.
I'm told it is separate, but I don't know how it all comes together, so we need to research.
So I think there's another question that when I talked to Jeff Pryor was, um, the tax lodging dollars of around forty-two to forty-three thousand dollars that we were told till last year to find projects to spend on. Does that money sit with our city? Does that money sit with the county at this point? Because I'm not sure, I don't know if that's within our own treasury department or if that's a county, if we've even sent that check.
Well, first of all, it's, it's actually more than that because.
We've had some time.
It's because it's more like fifty thousand according to the twenty twenty-two budget.
Okay.
And I don't know where it sits.
But that I don't know, yeah, I don't know the answer to that either. We can find out though. I don't know if that, if we have to, you know, go to them for that money and, and that's, but that's, I'll find out.
And we were asked to do tours projects or something related to that, right? So, yeah, I agree that the sidewalk was part of that project that we put some. So I think that to move this part of this contract for, I mean, obviously, we need some confirmation on a couple of funding items, correct? Is that what I, what I'm seeing?
Yeah, we probably need to get a, a confirmation of what that cog money is and which file it is. At the same time, I'm actually not really concerned about this because we've still got Kerry's money, I believe, that we can spend and this is complete, I mean, because of.
Okay. I think we can't keep letting that sidewalk sit, just my personal opinion. But, um, at some way, we need to get our city looking better in that, in town.
And it's liability too, with the owner and just the pedestrians. It's, we just have to get it fixed.
But do we, do we make a motion on that today to set this project, if we wanted to make this contract forward? Or what do we need to do?
Uh, you guys have already voted to move that forward, so I just.
So we need to confirm funding at this point then before we move forward. And how, how we get the tax lodging numbers and what those actually are? And then separate the cog money and figure out what that is. And it'd be great if you just email every council member with the answer to what those questions are when we get them. So, um, because we can't keep sitting. We, we sit another two months and this price probably changes again.
No, and we've got that contract ready to go, so it's not yet.
Okay.
So what are the questions that need to be answered again and who answers them?
Basically where the money is, so we need to find out where that lodging tax, what I've got written down is, we need to find out where that lodging money, tax money is, where it lives. And then, um, the twenty K that, um, council member Missiles had secured from cog, how we pursue that and where it is. And then also, um, look at applying that Kerry's money if, if those two options don't pan out. If we pay for it with those other two, then I think we do that. But, um, then the next option would be the Kerry's money. So either way, it's moving.
And the Kerry's money seems to be broken. They're starting to be a little more lenient. There's a, an article in the paper just a couple of weeks ago about some of that, um, that they're going to start sort of breaking that down to be used a little bit more easily, um, so it can be spent, so. Okay, great, great.
And then also the over-budget and finance department, I'd like to hear. Did you get any of that stuff written down?
I think Janine's got that stuff down, the questions, yeah.
And you have our recommendations?
Yes, well, just that you want the mayor to look at it.
Okay.
Yeah. And recommendations to follow the budget as.
Yeah, and what they're going to be to help our budget.
Otherwise.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you got to come up with an amendment for the budget and have a really, yeah, a good reason why we're doing it. Otherwise, you gotta come up with an amendment for the budget and have a really, yeah, good reason why we're doing it.
It's a tough one, it's a tough one to want to pass amendment right now.
So that's, there's my thirty thousand foot update on the, the grim first quarter.
It's, it's grim, but it's a good update, and, and I support admin committee a hundred percent, and however you guys, keep us posted and move forward.
Yeah, good, good report, thank you, admin committee, thank you very much. Um, okay, we're gonna go to announcements, presentations, and appointments. Any citizen comments today? Anybody online? No, is somebody have their hand raised? Is that Derek?
That's Derek.
Okay, does he have something to say?
No, he's off, he's, well, he can if he's live, he's not muted.
Okay, just wanted to check, all right.
No, I'm okay, I, I'm good.
All right, thank you, Derek.
Any issues so far, or you're good?
So no citizen comments tonight? Wow, quiet tonight, okay. Oh, and we, oh, yes, we do, we do have an appointment for planning commission, we need to put, um, Alisa, I, I need help with her last name, please.
So do I.
Shimakee.
Shimakee?
Shimakee.
So she's applied for, uh, historic planning commission, and I think she's a fantastic candidate, so we need to get approval through council.
Actually, you, the mayor.
The mayor, yeah, the mayor has a way to show affirmation.
Absolutely, I'd appoint her in heart, I think it's a great addition.
Mayor already appointed her, but you can take credit.
Right on, that's good, I asked Alisa last year, so I'll take credit for that, because she did join the team, so, and we need it, so great. All right, we'll move on from that, and we'll go right to the utility bill ordinance update.
Oh, so this is just, so currently under that utility ability ordinance, um, we have to send the guys out to post basically, what, three times?
Well, so I have to mail letters out.
Three times.
And then, and sometimes, the first time that took me an entire day, because we hadn't done that since COVID hit. Um, but then after that ten-day letter I sent out, I have to track that, and then I have to send the guys out to post notices to turn the water off. Then I have to send them out again the day that their water is supposed to be turned off, they have to give everybody a half an hour notice, and then they have to go back and turn the water off. So weird.
So this is to reduce the amount of times that they visit the property when the water is being shut off?
It's basically saying, here's your letter, if you don't pay, we'll knock on your door thirty minutes before, and then your water will be shut off.
Yeah.
So it's taking out the forty-eight hour notice and the thirty-minute notice that we were posting.
Well, we have, I think we have to do the thirty minutes.
It just, I know, but I'm just saying what we eliminated in the ordinance, so they still have to make contact before they shut it off, but they don't actually have.
They don't have to be thirty minutes, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
So what recommendations I would, and I don't know if we can, but I think the five dollars is probably there because it's been there forever.
Hmm.
I'd like to raise that, maybe either to ten or twenty, or probably ten dollars for the late fee, because five dollars doesn't even come close to covering the time that staff has to probably put into it. Um, and then the fifty dollars to be hooked back up, I think we bumped that up to seventy-five, because once again, you're not, we're not even recouping any of the time that goes into this, uh, penalties. I do want people to get their water turned back on, and I feel for that, but I think this, especially upping the five dollars will hopefully encourage people to, uh, pay before the fifteenth of each month, and then the fifty dollars, again, it's just recouping the city's time. I, and I think these prices were set a long time ago, I don't know when, probably when this document was made. Um, and I think we just need to up it with where.
Five dollars doesn't scare me for a late fee.
Huh?
Five dollars does not scare me for a late fee.
No, no, ten dollars is a little bit more, is, is like, man, maybe I should, I'm not, I don't wanna keep losing ten dollars, it's a hundred and twenty dollars on late each month. But even, I think even we doubled the fifty, I don't think it'd be that bad, but again, I want people to turn, get their water turned back on, I don't want it to be a huge burden of cost.
Yeah, we, that's, I mean, I don't know what Cleveland does now, but that's what it was, it was like a hundred dollar flat fee, you know, for, if we shut your water off, you know, we'd come, if you had a water leak, we'd shut it off, you had to fix it, whatever, but, I mean, that's kind of thing too, it's, that's what I was, I agree with you, because it's like, maybe people don't wanna pay extra hundred dollars, so just pay your bill, or come talk, you know, half the people, it's like, I'm talking to them at the door, and I'm like, have you tried calling City Hall and making contact, because you can pay half it, we'll keep it on, so.
Yeah, it's the same thing at our, at our company too, if you don't work with us, it's hard not to work with the customer, and so it, people are gonna take advantage of the, the city, then you're gonna get hit with a bigger bill than if you just worked with us. And we're not recouping anything for five dollars or fifty dollars.
So, I don't know if this is possible, but what about some per, just so that as time goes on, right, inflation is going a little, little high right now.
Yeah.
Uh, some percentage of the bill.
Or even, yeah.
Like fifteen percent of the bill as a late fee, and then you don't have to worry about updating it like ten years ago.
It stays consistent?
I, I, I just toss it out, I don't know what the rate is.
So you just have to figure out the percentage, if you do fifteen percent, right, and you're going a hundred fifty bucks a month right now, right? There's some twenty, ninety bucks, something like that, a hundred bucks.
All right, it's just a thought.
Some of those people have a big bill.
Well, depending on how far it goes, if you.
Yeah, those, and those were because we couldn't turn off during COVID, so there was some large ones, but that theoretically shouldn't happen.
Not yet, it shouldn't get that bad.
I mean, once you're two months past due, which is two hundred.
Seventy-eight dollars and twelve cents.
It's gonna be a percentage of three hundred bucks, basically.
See, but is that worth it then for our time, for office time?
It needs to cover whatever staff, but, you know, it, it, we can't be profitable, but we need to cover expenses.
Yeah.
Right?
And that's inside and outside, really, like this.
It's, it's office work inside here to send them out, and then it's him doing it, and still coming back and reporting it back into the log system. So there's, you know, there's double office time, right, to start it and to end it, and then there's bubba in the middle of it, so, um, whatever you, you wanna come up with, with percentage or dollars, I think that's a, um, something needs to cover it, yes.
Can we start with the five dollar, just to, just to get one out of the way?
That's what I was thinking, yeah, that's a late fee, right?
That's a late fee, so, everybody is gonna be, let's just say a hundred and thirty dollars, or a hundred and se, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the two months is what's fifteen percent of that?
About twenty bucks or twenty bucks.
Is that, okay.
It'll be a hundred and fifteen, so if there's two hundred.
That's ten bucks a month, if it's twenty dollars, so it kind of equals itself out to, yeah, if you did fifteen percent.
I, anywhere you go these days, you know, if you have to pay a late fee, it's, it's, it's gonna be like twenty-five or more, and it's just.
Labor's not cheap, you know, I mean, every time you have to stop something, you know, shh, stop something to send something out, he stops some, his production to go to, and something's gotta come back, she has to go back into a system that she's not probably into, so there, you know, there's an effect all the way around.
Make sure that I have to pay whether or not they get, yeah.
And so when you look at, say, it's twenty-five dollars, and it's a lot, but it, oh, to be honest with you, it probably barely covers the fee, to be honest with you, with what labor costs.
Yeah, well, it's one hour of our guy's time, you know, with his wage, medical.
Then, then it's not even close to being covered.
Yeah, I mean, and especially, it'll help without the door hangers, but, but it, it does screw up a day. If we do them, then we gotta wait, then you gotta wait a half an hour, it's like, I mean, we're literally making a list, going down the list right in time, so we don't go back half an hour.
Not including the back and forth of what happens.
And calling me, did they pay the bill, are we turning it off?
Making, double checking, because then we gotta go back, we do shut it off, and then they pay five minutes later, and it's like.
So, so we'd like to make a motion to present an amount, that would probably be great.
For the five, for the five dollar part?
Mm-hmm, yeah, whoever wants to make the motion for it can state what they'd like to go for.
So you would just make, yeah, just make your motion to pass it as amended for whatever the amount is you wanna put in there?
Okay, I'd make a motion that we, uh, the late fee for non-payment of water will be fifteen percent of the total bill.
I don't know that Visions is gonna be able to do that for us, I think.
They certainly should be able to, if the price we pay them is.
I second that portion.
If not, we'll come back and figure it.
Could we like to make a vote on yea or nay on the, they pass this motion for the five, for the fifteen percent on the total?
What's fifteen percent of a hundred and thirty-six dollars?
It's about twenty bucks.
Twenty dollars, okay, yeah, all right.
Do you wanna put that in motion, or put it here?
No, I'm voting.
She got the motion, okay.
I'm voting for Janine and, or Catherine's, and Janine second.
Aye.
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 Yep, aye.
There you go.
It passes this motion to add fifty percent to the total late fee, has passed.
Well, and was that amendment for the whole?
And then, do you, you have to vote on the, on the ordinance itself, so amend the, to amend the code, yes, do not have to post all the.
The ordinance itself, make a amendment. On the utility bill ordinance update?
I believe that we approve the utility, utility bill ordinance update.
As amended with that.
As amended with the amended fine.
Well, let's, let's make one more amendment on there, and that's the fifty dollar, that's the fifty dollar charge to be a hundred dollars.
For reconnect?
For reconnect.
You kinda have to a friendly.
To a hundred?
I'll make a friendly amendment, sorry.
I would just, I would just, uh, like to hear from, uh, Barbara and Michelle, is what does it actually cost to turn it back on again? Roughly, is it a hundred bucks or?
I mean, I think it's fair, well, yeah, that's what it was in Cleo.
Staff time, so I mean, by the time, time Jenny's time, and then one of these guys.
Yeah, and then it's. And Sam, Jim, or Kyle.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, they're roughly. I mean, they're pretty fair, the technical current ordinance calls for a twenty dollar fee for them to hang the door hanger.
That's all we need.
I was thinking it might be more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A twenty dollar fee for them to go knock on the door thirty minutes beforehand, and then a fifty dollar fee to turn it back on.
So it's actually charging them ninety.
So it's ninety, so bumping it to a hundred instead of me going in and putting in three separate fees.
It's ten bucks.
Yeah.
Make it easier.
Yes.
It's closer to covering the cost.
I'll make that friendly amendment.
So I accept your friendly amendment, which is part of the rough rules, just in case.
How does everybody vote on the am, the friendly amendment to this, uh, utility billing ordinance?
Aye all around.
Aye.
Aye.
Utility bill friendly amendment passed. Thank you. Um, now to unfinished business, we're gonna go to number ten.
Do we have to pass the ordinance?
Oh, did we pass it?
No, no, yes, we just passed the amendments, we still have to pass that.
Oh, okay, sorry, 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 sorry.
Let me, uh, oh, I think Kath, did Catherine do that originally?
She started the original amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then I'll make a motion to adopt the amendments on the utility bill ordinance, um, as stated.
Sorry, I second that.
Okay, uh, let's take a tally on ney or yea to accept the, um, utility tax complete package amendment.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we passed utility tax ordinance amendments. Let's move into unfinished business, we'll go to number ten. Is this purely discussion at this point?
This is discussion.
On, um, property tax levy?
Property tax levy, um, we've been discussing different ideas of how to increase revenue. I don't know the last time a property tax levy has been run in this city, but it's probably been decades.
Yeah.
Currently, we're the lowest, I believe, in the state, definitely in the county, but state, we are the lowest property taxed city in the state. Um, so I would like, the, I'd like to move forward with loading a levy out there in August on increasing property taxes. And if council is okay with that, we will send it to the attorney to draw it.
Is there a fee of, of, attached to running a levy?
Probably, usually the last one that I was involved in is about eight thousand dollars roughly to, to run the, to get it on the ballot. There'll be attorney cost on drawing this up, I'm not sure what that's gonna be, but it's, it's a template.
It's everybody's plate. Yeah, it'd be a boilerplate template for them to do something similar to that. And then you, I, I think discussion of what that actual number is is.
That, actually, so I guess what we're looking at was adding forty-seven cents, currently we're at a dollar twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, add forty-seven cents to that, that will put us above South Cleo, but below Allensburg and below, uh, Cleo.
Okay, puts us right in the middle.
Yeah, puts us right in the middle.
What, uh, what's dollar amount that that's expected to, to raise if it?
A whole hundred thousand dollars, that's it. It's, it's, it's nothing, we need more, we'll figure out a different thing, so, but I think this is a good litmus test also. Let's see if it goes, if it, if it doesn't go, then we get to have another discussion.
It's just gonna be a pretty discussion, yeah, it's gonna be, not gonna be a good discussion if it doesn't, doesn't pass this year.
Right.
And we'll have to come up with a game plan.
I su, I support it. Um, what sort of package has to be put together to provide information to the public, or, I guess we get to discuss that in the future.
Yeah, we'll try to figure out where, what kind of points, which, so as a city, we can't go out there and say, yeah, you gotta vote for this, blah, 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 employees can. City employees can go out there, there could be a group that we put together to go out and educate people and promote this. Um, I guess some of our ideas was, let's just come up with four bullet points. Every single one of these people is gonna be asked that question ten times a day, why, 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 and if we can just give them four reasons. The police department, I can't remember the percentage, why that's going up, twenty, twenty percent.
And was not gonna be twenty percent a year for the next three years?
Yeah, yeah. There's number one, right?
That's like eighty thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, this one, this is, yeah, two years from now, it's not gonna, this isn't gonna cover that increase.
We're at two sixty-five about, or two seventy roughly under with our police today, and next year's will be up around three twenty-five to three thirty.
We're at two thirty-five.
Is that what it is, two thirty-five?
We were, that's when we said, prior.
So it's quite a, quite a steep, and then, um, you know, we have the B and O, the B and O tax that we have passed on utilities, which will help with the other funds, some other funding contributing to that, so.
Yeah.
Come, if, if that passed, that's a good combination of close to, um, uh, I wanna say close to possibly two hundred thousand dollars, that's well needed for revenues in this budget to be right even at this point, yeah.
That's a hundred too, Jeff.
That's a hun, is it a hundred?
Roughly a hundred.
That's what I say, it's around two hundred for both, correct?
Oh, if, if the property tax.
If the property tax was passed, and that, and then, and then you take that little bit of REIT money that we're, that we've done, add to that, it could be twenty-seven, it could be forty, we just don't know. But we have to start somewhere to sustain the city, and it's not happening without some type of tax or levy increase.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but, yeah, still.
So I guess, we don't really, I don't believe we need a motion or anything on this, let's just move forward with this, get this levy brought back to attorney, from the attorney to us, and then we vote yes to go to the ballot.
But we have to kind of move quick, because we have to get the ballot, it on the ballot by before May thirteenth?
Yeah, it has to be to the county by May thirteenth.
Okay.
By May tenth, we'd say our deadline is, probably?
Yeah, which our, I guess.
Well, we'll just, let's put it on the next council.
Council meeting, let's have that on there, let's get it to the attorney as soon as possible, please. Great, that's good, um, good, good conversation. Now for another unfinished business, number eleven, pure conversation, it's about paid parking. And who wants to start? Jimmy, would you like to start?
I'd like to, and I, I'm sure, I don't know if you can put one of those documents in.
Oh, yeah, I can.
The one that's the update, and, uh, you guys have access to this in your packet too, so, um, I think being in the middle of a, of a project, and we are, the parking project, the, um, and looking at what it's done, and it's bringing in money, and, you know, parking's a huge issue in town for all of us, I've been thinking about parking for about four years, because we spent some time on the planning commission thinking about it, but with no real solution or anything, so I, the current, uh, project is, pilot project has got me really thinking a lot, because it's great to bring in the money. We're bringing a little bit of money, we could bring in more money.
Lot more money, yeah.
And so we, the city owns, and correct me if I'm off here, quite a few lots that are accessible to us for whatever, I believe we want to do, and there might be some restrictions on some of them. Um, and so what you've got there, and I've put these glasses on, are, um, a lot, can't see with one glass, I can't. And Jeff and Catherine.
Why don't you start with number one, the one by the city hall here, that'll be discussed.
Yeah, so, so Dakota, along Dakota, at one point, there was a fence that was five feet over, and then at some point, I think, our former public director realized that the standard fence wasn't city property, so the fence got moved over, so there's a whole lot, a whole line of city property that's just kind of marshy grass. That could be parking, that could be, and I'm talking about paid parking, not free parking, a lot of smaller communities have like paid parking lots that are walkable to the main core, and that's kind of my concept here, that would be a really easy thing to retrofit and put paid parking there. So that's the one spot. Another spot, some of them are easier than others, the other one, we already have parking on Runji Field, some of the feedback I've heard, and I think other councils have heard is, and this maybe has changed, the, the meters were in front of the playfield, and I don't think they should be there, but, but putting meters on the lower part of that, of that, um, street, that's a lot of parking, those are easy, I think, if, and I think would generate much more than a hundred dollars a month. Um, the other parks, places that we could use, there's, there's a lot, um, you know, Jeff is very familiar with, um, right across from Runji Field, and I think it was designated for some kind of parking.
The car show.
Car show party.
It's for the partial parking.
And I'm talking about that, that could be a paid parking lot.
Yeah.
Right? So you start adding these places up, that's a lot of parking spaces, and they're all accessible downtown, they're all walkable downtown, but they're not downtown, that thing. And the, another lot that's much harder to deal with is the city lot that's adjacent to Pennsylvania and Fourth Street, it's where the museum is, the museum's got three and a half lots. The lot that is closest to the hillside, and I think into the hillside, is cities.
Yeah.
That's, that could be parking, it'd be harder, that would, I think, require a lot of excavating, and I'm not sure exactly where the line ends there, but, but that could be a plan in the future. There are also some smaller spots, um, Kathy, help me with this, because she's got a better visual.
Oh, right off of Washington. Yeah, right off of, uh, Washington Street, um, there's, um, some places, um, down, uh, close to Bobby Fisher's, there's a, there's a swatch of, uh, city property right there, and then also on the other side of Washington, just beyond Heritage Distillery, there's some city property in there as well that could be used for, um, for parking. So, and then there's also another little, this other little place over, um.
Number seven.
Yeah, number seven, that's right at the end of Pennsylvania Avenue, where it starts to head uphill, close to the Coal Mines Trail, people park there all the time, I park there. Um, yeah, and that, and all we'd have to do is just put, you know, one of the signs out that says, you know, required, the signs say required parking, and I think that's appropriate, it should say that. And it also says, you know, uh, local residents exempted, and I think it should say that as well.
Yeah, no, but I think, I think those are the key factors.
Yeah, the signs are fine, we just need more of them, basically.
So are you talking about eliminating not putting them on Pennsylvania Place?
Well, let me, let me talk about that for a second, yes, that would be, that's, that's my thinking, I mean, I'm kind of influenced by what the codes read right now, and, you know, like our codes say, we're supposed to, as a city, assure adequate off-street parking, that's good, we're supposed to protect the historic character of the community. That's part, in the, in the parking code, there's several things related to that, and the sign code, we're supposed to encourage signage that's consistent with the story practices, and promote and integrate systems, we're supposed to avoid, um, sign clutter, so anything that we can do to avoid sign clutter downtown, I think is a good thing. And I think.
And I think it's, you know, I've only talked to a few people who have come to town, and they've been kind of confused. Do I have to just, can I have to, can I park anyplace? Do I have to, if I park in front of this sign, do I have to pay? Or, I think it's a little confusing. So. My proposal, and this, that proposal, just something to think about. If we could, you know, shift the process of downtown parking to some of these other lots, we'd make more money.
This is all discussion. This is all about everybody's gonna put, so.
Yeah, so that's.
I like the idea of number one on Dakota there, because I was just talking to Don Yasmovic's son. And he, he's like, can I mow that and everything? Like, I don't have a brush, huh? If you wanna mow it, you're more than welcome. But it's like, if we could fix that one V ditch and even put a culvert in, even if we made it gravel for now, that is a really good spot. Seven isn't a bad spot. Actually, today, we did, we did put, Kyle went out and put another sign in the park, but we stretched them all the way from the playground all the way to the archway.
Kinda cool.
I just don't have arrows.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. And, and my thing, I didn't wanna put it past the archway because it's kinda, you know, some people start angle parking, that road's so narrow. So we had something, but then we had more signs. We had like parallel parking only. Obviously, the parking lot's a good idea.
The number, sorry to interrupt, where's seven at?
That's where I parked my truck.
Right across from City Shore. Oh, okay. I just said it to see.
Yeah, right, yeah, right over there.
Thank you.
And then, number three's not a bad idea, but we'd almost have to come in from the alley behind the bathrooms. And there is all that other, well, like, there's a parking lot out there.
It would have to be alley access is what I thought was.
Yeah, if they, yeah, if they came off third, kind of like the little parking lot where we park for the residual when we're in the bathrooms.
Yep.
If we could flatten that out, I mean, there's a couple manuals, but if we brought it up to grade, there is, I mean, I bet you could at least get ten more cars there. I mean, until it goes into the hillside, then it is kinda, and the cool, what's that?
I'm sorry, yeah, we wouldn't have to mess with the hillside so much.
Yeah, and we wouldn't have to, you know, do anything there, but, and then, I mean, with most of these too, winter time, it'll probably end up being snow storage, but.
One thing, I mean, just a recommendation, I don't know how everybody feels about this, but I know there's been some, when we, when the, let's call it the pilot program went up, there's concerns with, that it was gonna push parking into residents. And I, you know, I've always sort of felt that maybe there's some particular areas that should be sort of, not restricted to residents, but sort of resident parking only type signs where we're not letting towards show up and start just parking throughout the neighborhoods to avoid paid parking. And I think that that's a way to protect our residents and their parking, because it's our, I mean, it's very, it's a delicate parking right in this town. You have fifty-foot lots, that's two cars, you're done. And so, you know, and so to me, I think there's something we have to think about how we still protect the existing neighborhoods from flooding if we do pay some type of parking structure. So there's something to think about, maybe how you wanna detail or decide we move forward with that and sort of protect our residents of parking. You know, maybe it's not a law, you know, a policy or ordinance, but it's a, just sort of a currency sign.
Yeah, back to work.
So, it sounds like this, but I just wanna verify. So what we're talking about is basically an expansion of our current program? Using the same.
With some adjustments.
With some adjustments, yeah. Well, moving the, the parking signs away from downtown to these areas.
But, but using the same system that we've contracted with to generate funds by dialing in?
Correct.
The web, we're talking about expanding that, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I, I think that's a great idea. For me personally, and I've talked to a number of folks that actually are saying, why don't we put more signs out because they're worried about people thinking, oh, I can't park here, but I can go right over there. So I, I think that that's a good idea. I, I'm a little bit, I, I think a lot of these spots, if you go downtown during a festival at Runji or the market, a lot of these things are already being parked on. So they should be, that's low-hanging fruit, right? So to me, that seems like low-hanging fruit. You just put signs out there. I'm a little bit sensitive to a couple of them, which introduces parking in a residential type neighborhood. And that's not really fair necessarily to people that are living there. That, I'm just saying, not saying I'm against it, but it has to be more thought out. But the areas that are more downtown, I think, that's great.
And this is why we wanted to have this conversation, right?
My, my one thing, with all due respect, I don't think the signs on Pennsylvania are a big deal to me. If you remember about a year ago, there was that thing that was going on where some, you know, Nazi group was posting stickers. And I, I did a circuit several times, you know, looking for those signs. So I looked at every single street post throughout the whole downtown numerous times, and there are way more than you think.
There aren't those green signs.
Those parking signs are like a minuscule amount of all the other signs that are there. And so I just think that that's, that's a lot of potential revenue on Pennsylvania, and I don't think there's any downside. But that's just my opinion.
That's why we're talking about it. We didn't disagree.
Well, I, I question, we're gonna have to put signs up to direct people to leave paid parking and for Pennsylvania to not continue to be used by people for hours upon end and it always to be packed. We'd have to put up thirty-minute-only parking signs, which are more signs.
Yeah, I was just thinking we could just go back to where we were and just really respect the, I mean, I, I know there's a lot of signs down there, and I guess that's what I'm reacting against, because one more sign, there's one more sign, there's one more sign, and it'd be nice to go backwards.
Maybe they should be added to the existing signs if that's the, I mean, it's literally four signs downtown that you have to look for.
But if I'm coming to Roslyn to recreate, and I can park on Pennsylvania Avenue and not have to pay all day long.
Why would I go to a paid parking lot?
Yeah, you almost would have to limit the amount of time you could park on Pennsylvania Avenue to force them into the.
And then that would be yet another sign.
How does Allensburg do theirs? Because they have like two-hour parking.
They have like fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, two hours, three hours. But you know, that could still be a deterrent, just thinking that there is one.
No, I think that's, I, signage, immediate has to start with more signs just to get the, get it out there.
Or at least one.
But I think, you know, the direction of arrows, like, how we, you go to the park and you see that sign, it should have an arrow going each way that expands it. And it may, it could start that simple, but with a few more of those, like Runji, you'd need more than the two that were there. And, and I think the idea was to not put it, I'm for, I don't have kids, but I don't know that we, I wanna have a paid parking in front of the kids, just children's play area, right? I think there's a lot of local families that love to go there, and I just, I'm not sure that that's what I wanna put, paid parking, because you're talking a few tourists might go there to park.
Well, locals don't have to pay for parking.
Well, I, I, right, but I'm just saying in general, it ends up just being a parking spot for, for tourism as they come. But I think that, you know, expand it with some arrows to, you know, expand off the signs to get it. Because there's also, and that was the whole thing, I've sat at your wife's shop, and they'd get out and was like, well, is this just for this stall or is it for all these stalls? And so there's some education that we need to make simple, a little easier for them to understand.
And that was my plan for Penn Ave this year until the street budget kind of went downhill.
Yep.
I mean, I was gonna get rid of all that tile spar because nobody likes it, and I don't. And I had to do like sleeves where you could put the wood post in. And then kind of when Leah was working on these, we talked about, or I talked with her, is like, where we only have like three of those parking signs on Penn, you know, but have the arrows in the middle and then arrows at the end. So we don't have so many. And then I could actually get rid of some, it was like, because there's extra signpost on Penn that have no, don't have a sign on them.
Correct.
Kyle went last fall and, you know, redid them all, so they all matched, you know, like the, the no parking from, you know, whatever it was, midnight to six AM or whatever, and he, he made them all look even. But, yeah, I mean, that, that was my whole goal with this, so we didn't have so many of those parking. I mean, just like at the park too, I just want arrows, so like here, you know, it's the same thing. And we could move that one from the playground section, but it's like, then it'd be like, it'd be nice to put a playground parking only. Then you're adding another sign, so it's kind of a rock and hard place, you know, we're in.
But you're still catching those visitors that might pay here for their, with their kids and stuff. You're not just like full force drive in and seeing paid parking, paid parking, you have it split up, which is nice now.
Yeah. And we, and we could even put it to another spot I thought about was even like down by the dog park. Because people, sometimes in the summer, they'll, they'll park right in front of there.
Yeah.
And it's like, I, yeah, I'm like, oh, and then, and you know their bicycles or something like that. Or even where we pile the snow, like past the museum. A lot of people park there, a lot of people park all the way atop the hill towards that fire hydrant. If we had, and that would be a lot easier where we could just dig holes, wood posts, separate them out, something like that, or even do the, the arrows there too.
Well, one thing, I think the green is very, you know, it goes with our environment, the signs that they have. I mean, I think the ones that stand out to me are the red and white and green and white and black and white that sit on Penn, and that's just sort of how it's always been, right? But I look at the new, at least, I think they're more environmentally friendly at least, in the sense of looking at them, right? They sort of blend. But, you know, we need to, we need more, right, to start this process with. So we need, if somebody can reach out to find out what would cost, well, one is we need to replace the two at the playground because they're ripping.
That's all, that's done today.
Okay, so what does it cost to replace each of those from that company? Do we know that?
How many do we have left?
We have, I could go count.
Because I thought they gave us six to start, they gave us twelve.
I probably got six left.
Oh, you have new ones then?
I had, yeah, well, two of them were called replaced today, but there's, so there might be four new ones left, but.
I can reach out to them.
Is there a, does somebody wanna put a small community together to propose how the signs lay out and bring them to council? Or is it something you wanna have a discussion here within council to decide how we lay those out?
Discussion here, how they lay out?
Okay.
I think so. I, I, to me, we make it a, to me, I would make it a priority of the Runji Field, making sure we have adequate signings on the Runji Field. And for this parking lot, right now, in my opinion, the city lot on Arizona, we get that thing finally done in a parking lot. We've talked about it, and it's sitting there not doing a thing for us right now. I think that is our priority of getting that done as a parking, a paid parking lot. And we see how that pilot program goes. All the other ones, I don't like the one on Washington because I think we'd have a battle, and we'd be putting more traffic into a residential area. Same, same thing with Washington by the Coal Mine Trail. I don't mind it, but, because you have Coal Mine Trail access, but you're still putting, you're still putting people into a parking, into especially like the boarding house and going up that way. And it's not just because I live up that road.
I actually thought one paid by the boarding house would be good, because with the overfluxes, they don't have parking requirement, they could actually have them paid parking to stay overnight.
Which is a good point too. I'll take. And this, in Dakota, would be my, would be my last on my priority list for either we fit, we could get it finished this year or a next year goal. Because of our budget, yeah, I like this. This is a nice lot, but there's just, there's too much work when we have that Arizona lot that should be a priority to get it gravelled, get it spaced out nice, with maybe some rock lining for our parking, and then a couple signs that say paid parking lot, and then this is done, and we can make hopefully some money off the mountain bikers, people that recreate there.
And we committed to that parking lot.
And we can, we actually make that parking lot a parking.
And I believe Theo was to do some engineering and some storm grant system. And I think, you know, obviously there's been a little bit of a halt as winter came in, but. I like it as well. I like those priorities. I mean, that, that lot in general is an easy one to market with the bike shop, as there's a ton of recreationalists that show up there on the weekends now.
Oh, yeah.
And they shoot right up Alaska because it's right there. They go right up, right up Third Street to Alaska and they hit the trail. So that, I think that's a key parking lot for recreationalists, you know? I really like that one. And then, I do like this one, because I think this one's a great angle parking.
Yep.
But also, you know, it, it's really just informing people to get out and start using them and gravel. I think some of this has to be bounced off the engineer because of drainage and runoff, you know? That's a very wet spot right here, on Dakota here.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I just think.
It was a great parking spot.
We have a great budget this year, but it's definitely doable.
But I think these are things that, you know, some get planned next year, some maybe you can get input this year. If we can get some signage up around Runji, especially we have several events coming to Runji. I think the sooner the better at Runji, to be honest with you.
No brainer.
And, and arrows. I, I mean, we're, we're gonna, you know, I don't know if the bike, the bike race is still going on, if there's some.
Yeah, we have two of them.
There's three hundred people coming to stay at the park. Well, two of that's parking that we're sitting, we're missing out on, no parking sites right now.
May first and July, so beginning of July, we have two really, really big bike races. May first is the kid one, and then Ju-, July, mid-July is a, some, it's kind of adult slash kid one. So, yeah, we're, there's gonna be a lot of people in town for these two bike races.
But if we do Arizona, there's gonna be a number of events in the park too, so that's needs right there.
It's perfect timing to focus on that area, particularly with our events coming back, the trailer show.
Time to do it, yeah.
You know, I think it's, it would be a great priority if we can focus on those now.
When I reach out to see if we can get more signs, do you want me to see if there's any other design for the signs so they look less neon?
How about verage? Is there any verage that needs to be changed?
They have arrows.
Yeah.
I think the signs look good. I think like what Jeff said, they're subtle. They go with our color code. They're, they're not too eye-catching, but they still get your attention when you park next to them.
I respectfully would like to see something a little more historic.
I can see if I do.
Something. I mean, I know we guys talked about before, but just if it's, if it's not a problem, just, and I, I do, I do appreciate, I mean, I really appreciate this. And I know we're gonna go someplace, we're going someplace with this, but I do wanna ground this in some of the codes, even though we're gonna change the codes, and if, if we're not gonna do, follow the codes, we should change the codes. Because, you know, that's.
We gotta lock the lock.
That's my guidance, and, and my own, my own personal opinion, of course, too. But, you know, if we're trying to encourage signing that's consistent with historic practices, let's do it. And, and, and we're already talking about encouraging off-street parking. It's city owned, so we're going there, so. But I am, I am grounded in this language here, so.
I think, do we need to relook at what the wording said? Is it, is it say residents exempted?
It says, I think, I'm pretty sure.
You want me to go grab one?
Yeah.
The wording, there's a chance to change the wording now that means more direct, and, you know, you wanna make sure that residents, or however you wanna say, locals are voluntary. Be very specific, so they get that.
Required, for sure. I mean, would, would upper UKC residents be more?
Yeah, I'm open to however you wanna.
I don't know if people would recognize that as well, or if local residents is more, more direct? Or UKC, not. I mean, do people recognize UKC?
If you live in UKC, you recognize.
You would recognize, that's right, that's true.
Or as we said, if you had to ask if you're a local, that, you know, and a local resident, then you'd probably pay.
So Jeff was a local, because you fit all the definitions.
But in general, I mean, because we talked about Cleo and Ronald, that, you know, we, and that was something that we discussed was not, we weren't really expecting because we sort of felt like we're all three sort of communities.
Yeah, we don't wanna.
And we discussed that, and I think there's some misinterpretation when that came out, because as we discussed, is we looked at it as Ronald, you know, they were sort of sister cities that we weren't directly picking on them, that we still wanted you to come and feel that you are a local resident.
Right.
Or a resident of the community, if, if that's my understanding, is that correct?
At least if Facebook sent a guy, the Bruhaha, when it first rolled out, which made from disgruntlement to, you know, damn Roslyn.
Yeah.
That is like, oh, I think everybody in the upper county knows what's going on.
They all panicked, figured out what was actually happening.
Yeah, they're already ordering from here.
Residents are exempt, payment required for visitors. I like payment required for visitors. It doesn't say voluntary, so it gives them.
Yeah, but residence does need, I mean, when I first saw that, I would, if you're a resident, you're a resident.
But we also cleared that a lot too. Like, you're like, the whole hoopla about it, like you said, Tom, it's been cleared up. People understand that.
I don't think it says UKC residents.
I think UKC residents.
Well, I can see what they say, but I know that they gave us all of these signs for free. So the more we change their wording and go in and demand things, the cost is gonna go up. And our profit is gonna go down.
Yeah, yeah, we don't wanna.
I, I wouldn't mind seeing what the change would be to say UKC.
Yeah, it shouldn't be.
Just to see what the change, change cost would be, because I think you guys have a valid point. We wanna make sure that we're not.
This is just me, but I think that would look sort of cool as a circle.
Yeah, I think so too. Having the Coal Mine symbol at the top.
Just a thought. I mean, I know.
That would be more historic.
I'm not trying to add a bunch of talk.
I think, I think they have to have their thing at the top, and we have our logo as a sign here.
You know what I'm saying? I guess, that part is historic.
But I think it's what their, their preference is gonna be in what we can do.
So this is, this is picky, but even if that black was brown, that would be more.
I can ask. I mean, I don't know. I didn't deal with them.
We'll talk to listen to a couple questions while she's there right now. Let's just sort of ask the, and get those on the board. And they're just asks. That's all they are.
Yeah.
So let's say, let's ask if, what would, if we changed the black to brown to be more of a, sort of the nat, natural environment, and say that. And then if you wanted to add UKC residents, see what they would charge for that.
Okay.
Okay? I think those are the only two. And then honestly, just bare bones, what more signs are gonna cost? Because we were given amount of signs with the two hundred and fifty dollar original contract that they provided somebody free when we signed the contract. That was part of the deal. And so it's fine, those few questions out and get back to us, or you can email them up. This would be great.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thanks for doing this, brother.
Do we know how much we made in the last month or two?
Well, this, we just got deposited this month. It was a little over sixty dollars. Last month it was ninety-five, and the month before it was ninety as well, so.
Another good question.
With four signs, we're making money.
Get different colors.
Yes.
For arrows, because most likely if I order from my, um.
Well, they could be white and blue. Is that what you're thinking?
More white and green, but what we could do, if this is like green and brown, we could go green and brown, so they match.
You know, it's something that comes, it's a contrast though, right, to make sure it sticks out.
Yeah.
But I like that. I think the arrows will make a big difference.
I don't know if you can add arrows.
But we'll find out.
Another point of clarification, I know we're in a pilot program. I'm unclear. I thought it was a year pilot program, maybe it's six months and not.
It never says pilot program through the, I went through the minutes.
Resolution doesn't say pilot program. The mayor pointed out.
The resolution doesn't say pilot program. The mayor pointed out to us.
Oh, well, the papers did have a program.
Well, the paper might have, but the resolution doesn't say that.
Yeah, I honestly, it probably comes out of my mouth, cause I think as we were getting a lot of kickback and pressure. You know, it was really, I mean, we had always agreed that at first when we started, this was gonna be a temp- not a temporary, but a trial to see how this ran. And I picked the word pilot and that was probably myself, so if anyone wants to blame me for it, that's fine. Um, but that's sort of how it got on the track.
There's no cutoff time in the.
And that was just sort of my way of saying, it really is just a trial to see how it was gonna work and we were doing, as we were capturing a few hundred here and there, I think we all went, well, boy, I don't think this is a trial anymore. I think we're actually catching on a little bit, is how that took track.
I'm just getting interested in asking, you know, I'm maybe doing a, a quick survey to citizens to see. I mean, I know it's quieted on Facebook, but I don't trust Facebook as a, as a survey tool very well, but you know, I'm not, I'm, maybe some people I hang out with, but I'm not.
I work at the brick and have heard a single.
My wife tells me that she sees people pay for it and she thinks it's funny at the same time and she thinks it's awesome, so.
Well, I, there are gonna be different opinions across, I just thought it'd be good to get some citizen feedback.
But these are, I know, but these are the business owners that are affected by it, the parking and so forth. So when I hear firsthand that she thinks it's a great idea and it's coming from her mouth, it's, uh, I really take it. So I think it's awesome that at least they're, they're seeing it and then we're seeing it too, that we're, that we're receiving money. Um, I, I, I like to keep it in the downtown core because it's the obvious. We're ma- we're making money and we are, uh, we're ta- we're controlling our parking in a way.
Any more, any more on this cup parking?
No, but thanks for paying attention.
No, I think it's a good conversation. It sounds like there's some more to come down the road. I think we've identified some areas and I think, um, we don't wanna lose traction of the future lots that we're already talking about on how maybe streets budget, we wanna keep track of that next year with your budget coming through, if that works.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if you can sort of put some notes down and see those futures that we think make the most sense to start with, that are cost effective to put in, which we pay the dividends on the way back. Um, I think are the way, way to look at which ones make the most sense to start with, that we think we'll get impact from.
So we think about getting some set up before the summer hits?
Yeah, I think.
If summer ever comes, mind you, but.
If, if we could, I think Runji right now, I mean, it would be, Janine will get the information relatively fast and she'll email it out. And I think what we need to do is obviously watch our quorums, but back and forth input. But I think we wanna get signs up at Runji.
It's our area.
Within the next month, even a few more with some arrows is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I'll just have to get the arrows and just figure out, cause I probably.
Because we're gonna miss a window and I wanna get that window in when, before events start. I think it's, it's important.
Yeah. No, that's fine. Once we find colors, cause.
It'll be interesting to see the jump in revenues off of that through the summer with it.
As far as parking, another idea that on Penn Ave where we have the no parking spots, you know?
Mm-hmm.
The big spots at each end, like by Harper's and Brick.
Yep.
Before we paint, I don't know what your guys' thoughts, but why don't we make that bike parking?
Cause that's where the bike truck pulls up.
Yeah, that's, and that's ADA offload, I think.
That's where the ramps and the vans are supposed to open up in this shaded area.
But the problem is they're on the wrong side.
Oh.
Most, most of them go on the passenger side.
Got it.
So I was, it was just an idea that we thought about, cause you see motorcycles parked there anyways, instead of having yellow, put like bike parking, so if someone has a motorcycle or something there. Then they're not taking up one stall with one motorcycle all day. I mean, and then, cause what we could do is like where the, where the ADA is, they actually make sure it's on the, you know, that we might lose a stall there or, you know, paint the crosshatches.
I think it'd be great if we did a little, just a little sketch and we added a couple of bike stalls in each of those locations probably, but we give buffer to the handicap spot itself.
Yeah, we could move the stall.
Right, because of swinging the doors, cause.
Yes.
In this community, it's typically an elderly gentleman or lady.
Yeah.
Using that stall, right? And so we give them to open their door to get out, be able to get to the handicap. And that's all my concern is, is that if we do that, that because there's two bike stalls, the three or four guys don't decide to squeeze in and try to make it useful and then it becomes a typical complaint that we see them, right?
Yeah. And, and, and with the brick too, it's like, we could almost probably got a stall or two more.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that's how they painted when they did that downtown. But I mean, that's, I mean, if we moved over and had, you know, moved the ADA the closest, they have their actual, you know, s-
The last.
Spot on the right side that they get out, you know, I mean, we might even add a stall or two instead of having bike parking. I'm just thinking, cause I get so many, you know, I mean, I'm not the, I'm not the police, but they're like, people are parking there. It's like, I can't write tickets. I just hang the signs and I paint. You know, like, I don't know what you want me to do. I'm just thinking of better ideas how I could work for everybody, you know?
Dan Ellsberg, if you go down by, uh, I don't, I don't know what street that is, but it's Pearl, it may be Pearl Street. Um, but if you look at their parking strip, their angle parking, the last bit towards you can skirt is a motorcycle park. It says bike parking.
Yeah.
And, and it may be worth trying to squeeze some of, you know, four of those in or two of those in next to each other somewhere. So I think it's worthy of looking at that before you repaint and then propose, you know.
Yeah.
Propose it to, so we make sure we're not cutting somebody off. Uh, but I think it's a great idea to add, cause we get a lot of bike traffic.
Especially from the brick. That is a huge area. Yeah, the other day, there's like four there.
Yeah.
You know, but man, maybe they're thinking, guys, maybe they don't wanna take up a stall each, you know, cause they have notes.
Victor goes out and yells at him.
Yeah, just one of those ideas, you know?
Well, if there's a full car spot, most bikers will park forward a stall. They'll back two up and put two in front.
Yeah, yeah, if they're together.
If they're together, yeah.
Okay. Uh, okay, well then, I'll wait on my colors too for the arrows.
Okay.
And we'll probably just leave Penn Ave for now until we, until we decide on that.
Okay. Okay, I think enough on parking. That was a great conversation. Um, let's move to number twelve. This is the last big one for tonight. It's the development code update gap analysis review.
And Michelle did have to leave. She had, I'm getting shit to go to.
Okay, so, um.
I'm on here. Look, Jeff, if you guys have any questions.
Wow, how can you do that?
Whoa.
We could just not get away, can't we? Um, um, I think in general, is it, do you wanna talk about quickly of the planning, what we did last week at the, on the, the special planning meeting, really the highlighted areas or some of the key spots they'll be looking at? Is there a lot for coun- there's not really a lot for us as city council right now on this. Michelle?
Yeah, I don't, you know, I hit the, uh, did you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I hit the big points. They've got some comments in there about they think that the fourteen hundreds per foot footprint is, um, too restrictive. I, we're not even gonna touch. I mean, those are not conversations we're going to have, so.
No.
Um, the biggest thing is they wanna reorganize things so it's clear for the applicant, which I agree with. Um, there's not a whole bunch that council really needs to address in there. It's more for informational purposes at this point. They will have that draft and then the draft is where you guys really need to focus. But the areas where they've got comments are where they're gonna be reorganizing things, moving things around, um, that sort of thing. But, um, you know, I, I hit all the big ones that I think you guys would have been concerned about, which there was, um, you know, like the fourteen hundreds per foot footprint, for example. We're, we're not, we're not going down that road, so. Um, I, I think I got all of those, but again, this isn't our last opportunity if we miss something, so the draft is gonna be the big focus when that comes out.
Uh, Michelle, this is Tom. I, I had a couple of questions. Uh, so, uh, first of all, I was very impressed. It's very thorough.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, they're raising questions and that's the right thing for them to do, so. Uh, but a couple of questions. One is, I didn't see anything there for the master plan overlay ordinance. And, uh, I was just wondering if that was on a separate track or on the same track? And then the second question I had, what's that? Go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, yeah, they have that whole chapter, so when we get the draft, that should be in there. And if it's not, we'll make sure that it does get in there, but they, they do have what planning commission worked on for that, so that should be incorporated when we see the red line draft.
Okay. And then the, uh, this other question is, uh, I mean, this is kind of an opportunity, right? If there's, you know, with your experience working with all this, are there any code changes that are maybe not, um, process or whatever, but are, is the staff looking at additional code changes that you'd suggest to clear up some things? Or maybe you're working directly with O-Tech on that?
I gave them my notes and then some notes that we've compiled over the last year or so with the variants that we've had and recommendations from the attorney. And those should be incorporated in their, um, in their red line draft as well and we can go over those when we have those. But, but yes, there are, there are some that were recommended by legal that need to be changed. Um, and so those, those were given to them separately in, in other notes.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions on, um, code update at this point in time?
It's great to have an opportunity to look at it, cause it's eighty-eight pages and, I mean, that's not dense, but it's still eighty-eight pages. So I appreciate the time to look at it.
Okay, great. Okay, let's close that. And let's move to number thirteen. Let's go to mayor, council concerns and initiatives. Um, who wants to start tonight? Anybody?
Uh, I just, I just had a question and I, maybe I missed the turn, but.
Go ahead.
So I saw the, the base cap contract, which we authorized.
Yep.
But, uh, there were a number of, uh, exclusions of qualifications in there, you know, which is typical of contracts. Uh, but I wondered if, uh, if we evaluated them to see if that just passes on expenses that we didn't expect or how that's gonna work.
I would be more, I have not had a chance to review this. I just saw this today. I was obviously on a plane today. I didn't see this. I'm more than happy to go through the exclusions from my background and look at this and give some feedback to our city.
Okay.
Um, I could probably just briefly correlate these to, to Bala, cause he'll oversee whatever project.
Yeah, it's, it's more of a question than a concern.
Yeah, let me go through this though. I think it'd be, I, I haven't, I have not had time to look at this since I walked in today. I was a little caught off guard.
The one that, that jumped out at me, which I get why the contractor would put it, is, uh, they exclude or, you know, of, they're basically anti-structural damage to the building. It's not their fault. So the first thing that comes to mind is, well, did they anticipate that there might be structural damage to the building? Does it work?
That'd be something we'll need to notify, we have to notify meanwhile, notify the building owner of that exclusion.
Yeah.
In the contract, so it's aware, especially doing that, that part of the work, right? Digging the hole next to it.
Right. Talk, talking with the contractor last fall when we walked in with Theo, Michelle's. I mean, like we said, they're planning on building those in a piece, you know, but probably that truck, that out to be as safe as as possible. Cause you can't really get an excavator in and then CDF everything after they build that wall, but.
Yeah, so you get to build the background, so it's all solid around it.
Yeah, let's, yeah.
With a little welding built, yep. So, okay, okay. Um, I have, I have one, maybe two, definitely one. Um, the jail cells were picked up last fall, I believe. And before the jail cells were to leave, um, there's supposed to be a contract from our attorney um, written about the agreement that if anything were to happen with the museum, the museum didn't follow through. Um, or was to be moved out of Kidded Test County, that city of Roslin was the first person to have an opportunity to pay back the re- refurbishing cost that they had put in, which was estimated around ten thousand dollars. Um, and I don't know anything. I've never seen the contract come in front of us. I wanna make sure that those legal documents have been signed by both parties, which would be the mayor and somebody here. And, um, I believe his name is Jim Reader, um, that picked him up, that was doing the, um, the police, the museum down in Ellsberg, so, um, I wanna make sure this document, it's important to the city of Roslin down the road if something were to happen. And I wanna make sure these types of documents are taken care of and, um, we have an assigned agreement to that. And if they have been gone without a signed agreement, how that's gonna be remedied.
Cause I know it was drafted.
Right.
I just don't know if it was finalized.
Just, it's, I, you know, being part of the museum and Heritage Club.
Oh, yeah.
And we're talking about a new museum, a possible, you'd like to build a new museum in the next five years. And not that that would be part of it, but if this doesn't go through and that's something that we'd wanna look back at, recuperating it in our, in our, um, possession. If we don't have the documents that we agreed to have, I'd, I'd just like to know the status of that and show that we, we've actually followed through on it. So there is some legal binding agreement there.
Tom, you remember the draft of them. I kinda remember the draft of them too. I've never seen it as a, as a citizen.
So I just wanna make sure it was actually signed when things were picked up and that there is a, a agreement between both parties.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, otherwise, I just have anything else right now? I think that was the only one that was really sticking on me here lately, um, that I wanted to know about.
Noah, do you have a list?
I just got a couple. I just wanna say, uh, thank you Baba for, um, taking the coal cart project. I think that is really awesome that, and it shows the leadership that, uh, our city has. Um, to show a case, our, our history, especially something that built our city, so I think that's awesome that you are doing that and thank you so much. Um, and I wanna kinda go, uh, the first step, I think, actually Jeff brought it up to me, is our welcoming sign needs a facelift. And I'd love to have, I'd love to get our, our, our art group to redo it exactly how it looks, just make it pretty.
Mike, Mike has heard, I think RDA is also looking into helping with that. I'm not sure what's going on.
I was told a redesign is what I was heard. It's what I heard through the grapevine.
Yeah.
And, 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 um, so to, you know, I, I'm not, I guess my thing is, I'm not sure who controls, who decides how that happens, right? Um, part of me wonders that it should come through city council and us not be decided by an outside, and not to be, I'm not trying to, but I don't think it's decided by somebody else what our city decides to do. I think we're elected officials. We have administration and I think that we should choose what we'd like to see as a redesign.
Yeah, I think it's like a great sign as it is. It just needs a, a facelift and.
Yep. We'd like, what we'd like to do is find a local artist that is willing to repaint and clean up what we have at this point. And, and, and if, if it's not a donation cost, I'd like to estimate what that would be. And, um, I think we can come up with some donated fees to cover the cost of that artist that would like to repaint it. And, um, I'd be happy to, to start with that, you know, with a group of people, if that's what it came down to, if we found the right person that said, I would love to paint that and get it cleaned up.
We have, we have a local muralist in town.
And I would.
Will Bow.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you could, would you reach out to us and find out if you'd be willing to help?
Well, capitalism.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can ask for it.
That'd be awesome.
Don't you think that'd be great?
I, I think we need to get it done before the summer, because you drive in now and it just, uh, it just looks sad.
So I'm seeing you just re- uh, clean up what we've got.
Yeah. We'd like to just present it clean at this.
I don't think we need a new design. I think we just keep what we have and just, like Jeff said, facelift.
Is that a council, council opinion then?
I, I, I mean, I, I, we're a cold town. To me, it's like, I just, I think the cold car just fits what we are.
I think that's what we are.
But maybe it's just our history and what we are. Um, and I, you know, if, if you could find the interest.
Yeah.
Nature.
I would be more than happy to figure out how we contribute with, um, the supplies.
Yeah.
And if there's some labor costs that you would need, just keep us, keep me informed and all, I can do the volunteer work of finding some donations for that and get it taken care of.
Okay.
Yeah, we might wanna take a look at it, Jeff, too, just cause some of that wood's.
Let me get some new posts you can put in.
That's what I'm saying, like, you know, trims are on it or something, get it all ready to go before, cause I thought about after last summer when we were hanging the flags for the holiday stuff. I was like, man, if I, I'm not an artist.
Were you cleaning it up all around last year for the first time?
We kept it weeding and stuff, but if someone could just like, really someone that can paint, you know, could like touch everything up or even repaint it and then redrew that coal cart or something. But we definitely need to look at some of the wood if it does need new posts, cause I don't know how old it is, but it was.
It's old.
It's old.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to what they've done, is ask somebody for a new addition. But I also think it's important what we have, volunteering for a time, if that's the case and it's something we all like, great. But I also think it should be controlled through our own city council for sure.
Yeah, I'm the one who, which is historic preservation. I'm certainly not gonna, I mean, I love that sign.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that, I, I think there's some things that we need to, as city council, that we decide, we don't, oh, I do have one other thing, but city council decides, you're, you are the elected officials. We should decide how our city looks and what we think our residents would like to see at S, right? And, um, that being said, um, the RDA would like to look at the art for the Yakima Nation in Runji Field. So I've asked for a rendition of some type and I, basically what I've been told was, I've been asked was, if we would pick the location or get an input on the location, they will provide a piece of art or something that would match that size of location. So what I'm asking is everyone go out on their own, take a look at Runji, or where you think you'd like to present some, to represent the Yakima Nation, where at Runji you'd like to see that put. Um, and that was some input that, that I was, I would ask by the RDA, if I would ask that by city council members to see if we could find a location.
And does it have to be Runji Field? Could it be Fireman's Park? Like Fireman's Park, everybody driving by or enjoying that.
All individuals and I want everybody to just give us their input. I think that's what we should do.
Yeah.
I do agree that the council is the, the fund stand on what things look like. Fireman's Park's a good idea though.
It's very seen, very visual.
It's got, it's very, very public.
And it needs something, you know?
It needs that, yeah.
You know, we were talking about it all summer, like what else could be here that would be cool, looks good, fun.
It'll spark people to stop and sit at that park and go and read what's on the signage.
See, I just can't think of a place for Runji, cause Runji just is set. It seems like, and you put something in between the gazebo and the, the tennis courts, it just is gonna be.
Stuck in the back wall.
Stuck in the back corner, when you could have it at the Fireman's Park where everybody can enjoy it.
So if everybody would like to just do a quick preview and if somebody, if you all just send me an email of your feedback, I will forward that. So if everybody would like to just do a quick preview and if somebody, if you all just send me an email of your feedback, I will forward that. And, no, you send me an email of that, please.
Yeah.
And everybody just sort of send me some feedback and I'll forward it to them and take care of the feedback so then they can work on the piece of art.
Did we find out about the, cause we met about the gazebo placement over here? Did we find anything else about the concrete and the store?
I'm, I'm talking to Sherry this week about it and I'm gonna present the pictures that we took.
Okay.
And I'm gonna discuss the locations that the council's recommendation was to not leave it in the open, but really to put it towards either side of the centerpiece. Um, whether it be relocating that sign or, and then you're gonna do, Jeanne's gonna do some homework for you on. That's okay. That's okay. Um, on the concrete.
Life, oh, yeah.
Yep, and so, so I'll, I will present those two, those are the two options that we came up with city council for them. So that's what I'll let her know and then we'll make the final decision when we get our information back.
Aren't they, it's on city property?
It's on city property.
I didn't know, nothing about that, yeah.
Um, Noah, would you like to do your, anybody else have any comments today or any concerns they'd like to speak to? Noah, you wanna do your thing?
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Great, it's adjourned tonight's meeting.
I second it and then we have to vote, Jeff?
To vote to leave?
A voting thing?
We have to vote to leave.
Not adjourned.
Wait a minute.
Not adjourned.